Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Gilbert Town Council Study Session for April 18th, 2023. We have, I'll call this meeting to order, and we have two items on our agenda. The first being the discussion of the FY 2024 Preliminary Budget. Introduce Kelly Faust.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's always my favorite time of year to talk about budget. So we've got our study session tonight. I'm just going to give a brief overview of some information and then open up for questions and direction from council. So as you know, Gilbert is a best-in-class municipality, and we get accolades all of the time. Some of the most recent ones, Gilbert is the number one best place to live in Arizona, best city for early retirement, not that we're encouraging anybody to retire, we need all of our staff. Number three city whose unemployment rates have bounced back most. We're also, we were fourth healthiest mid-size employers in Arizona, but earlier today I heard we just got bumped up to third. So a wonderful place to work and live and be. With our zero-based results, you're aware of this, we right-size the department budgets, a third of the organization every year. So we get through the whole town once every three years. With all of the changes with inflation, we actually had to add money with zero base this year, which is unusual. Usually we're removing money from the budgets and right-sizing it down to a lower amount. So we now have a cumulative savings of about 7.6 million since 2018 when we started keeping track of our zero-base results. Most of that increase is due to the raw water costs. We're in a drought and the water coming is just a lot more expensive than it has been in the past. Our budget process is a whole year-long affair. We kick it off in September. We'll do budget input through November with the departments finding their requests. Analysts will review the information in December, and then executive team deliberates in January and February, presents a budget, a balanced budget to the town manager who reviews it, makes additional changes in March, February, March. We bring information to council in April through our one-on-ones and then the study session like tonight. We have preliminary adoption in May and final adoption in June. For the budget we're recommending for fiscal '24, there were requested about $70 million of need across the town. We're recommending funding about $50 million of that need, which is about 72% of the requested amount. If we break that down by different funds, you can see general fund is the largest, and it is the largest amount that we're requesting for additional funds, about 30 million in that area. And then water, wastewater, the other funds, a couple of million dollars, a lot mostly keeping up with inflation, the increased cost of supplies and demand. For the general fund in specific, this is how the requests break out. Maintaining service level is the most of it, which is about a million three increase to contracted maintenance in parks, 2 million in some AV areas, and about 4 million in FTEs is the bulk of what's in the maintaining service level. In the lifecycle replacement, which is our other major category, most of that is radio replacements for both PD and fire. The radios that you see them carry around are at end of useful life, and so we'll work on replacing those next year. It's about $6 million, 6.3 million. So good investment across the town. In our streets and enterprise funds, most of the areas here are maintaining service levels, which will be items like crack sealing and surface sealing, utility increases, and then Neely and Greenfield's investment into their operation and maintenance. On the efficiency side, they're looking to do about $2.4 million of radios, which will connect to the water meters and help with that automated water meter reading program that we've started implementing and are working through. Councilmember Anderson asked to see what this looks like with our strategic initiatives. So most of the investment is on the built environment side and in our prosperous community. Fortunately, our economy is still really strong right now, and so some of those other areas are needing more of the investment at this point in time. But that's how it breaks out when you look at it across strategic initiatives. If we look at the recommended positions, there are about 44 positions in total. There were 125 positions requested, so we're about 35% of the requested positions that we are recommending to go ahead and fund. It was very tight competition for the recommendations on the having funding, ongoing funding, and the ability to support these positions. For our capital improvement projects, we're looking to do about $1.4 billion of investment. You'll remember that we fully fund the projects upfront, and then it takes us several years to work down through those projects. Most of the increase here, if we look at the carry-forward and the new, so carrying forward about 900 million, adding new about 450 million of projects. The new projects are mostly streets and water projects associated with the bonds that we issued last year. And even on the redevelopment, that is the parking garage, which is funded through the transportation bond as well. So majority of the new projects are with those funding sources. For the comparison of budget, current year fiscal '23 versus fiscal '24, we have our current year budget of about $1.67 billion, and then proposed would be just over $2 billion. Most of the increase you'll see on that bottom line with the CIP, those additional projects going in. For general fund, those increases are mostly associated with the new positions. There's about $9 million of carry-forward for projects that we're currently working on, but we haven't received some of the items onsite or continuing to work, and so we need to carry that money forward into next year. It also includes the 2 million for the ASRS, the pension pre-funding that we had talked about, the radios that we mentioned, and the FTEs. Property tax is one of the other items that's part of the budget. We need 31.6 million in levy to be able to pay the upcoming debt service payments. And there was a change from the county, as we've talked about with our assessed valuation, that changed, grew a little bit from the initial number. And so instead of the noticed 98.87 cents, it'll be .9883. So just a slightly lower, still rounds to 99 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. It'll be the sixth year in a row that we would have maintained that rate. So tonight is our budget study session, which is that first opportunity council has to discuss and provide feedback on the budget in the open public meeting. We'll take any of the feedback and incorporate it into preliminary budget documents and bring those to you for the May 2nd meeting. Preliminary budget is the maximum expenditure that we could do for the year, so it's arguably the more important of the two. We could do a lower budget or equal budget at final adoption, and then we'll be ready to start July and a new budget year. With that, I'll ask if there are any questions.
Thanks, Kelly. Councilmembers, Vice Mayor, any questions for Kelly at this time? This is your time to ask them. Councilmember Anderson?
Kelly, thank you for getting that information on our City of the Future Initiative and how that ties in. Is there a detail that breaks those numbers out that I can actually tie it to something in the initiatives?
Help me understand detail that breaks out. I have detail on what individual packages they are.
Well, in each of the categories that you have listed for the strategic initiatives, there are indicators that are listed in there. And I'm interested in tying the dollars that you show, the total dollars, to some of those indicators to see what we're doing, how we're on track.
We don't. When we collect the information from the departments, we do have them tell us which strategic initiative they believe their budget package falls within. But we haven't collected the data on which subcategory of the strategic initiative it's associated with. We could for a future year, or we could, it would be a manual process to go back and connect it to individuals. We don't have that data right now.
I think it'd be good for a future year because we'd like to, anyway, I'd like to see the strategic initiative tied to our budget so that we know where we're spending the money, and it's doing what we intended for it to do.
Let's go to the back. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Kelly at this time? Councilmember Kaprowski?
Hi, Kelly. I do have a question. I was noticing in the budget under the municipal facilities that in the crime lab item MF2524, it looks like it's showing just under 5 million. Is that correct?
It is. That currently has only the design for the project. And last year, the council had asked to remove the construction portion until we knew more about the design. But we can work on getting a number for that.
So if the construction portion was added back into the budget, I would assume that it would be able to then follow processes to continue to be evaluated and prioritized amongst the other projects. Is there, I guess, what are any risks that might be involved with bringing this back into the budget with the construction costs as well?
I would say not really any risks. Before we do design, it's going to be more of a placeholder number, and then as we go through design, it refines down. But we could certainly put in a placeholder for construction. It's out in the future years, so it wouldn't be part of the adopted budget for fiscal '24. But it would help us start to see what's the basic order of magnitude that we might look at and need a placeholder, and what are the potential funding sources that we would need to look at, whether it's geo-bonds or what other opportunities we might have.
This is an item that I'd like to bring back and add to the budget in terms of adding the construction costs as well, so that it has that placeholder and funding can be identified in the future. And even if it gets adjusted, there's some level of construction cost there so that we don't assign it to other projects.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Torgerson?
Just curious if you could come back with this because, of course, I'm going to be the guy that asks about property tax. And rather than saying the levy the same as last year's, since it has gone up, can we get a minor win for our residents and go down .0883 to just .98? Or flat instead of .9883, just a minor, tiny win for the people? Can I have that? Is possible?
I can look at that. What it would mean is...
$278,602.
So it would leave a little bit, we have, by policy, we have to keep at least 5% and under 10% of fund balance in that fund for delinquencies. So we can look at that, and it would probably mean having a little bit less in fund balance than this, than the proposed rate would have for delinquencies. Right now, we're running about $1 million short of where we usually are, but the second property tax, property tax usually comes in November and March, and we're still getting the information. So we're running behind where we usually are. There may be more delinquency, or it could come in in March. I don't know yet, but that's the risk we run.
But it is something we can examine. I just would love to bring back just a little win for the average guy, a little tiny, tiny, $12 win.
If council gave that direction, we could bring the documents that would have that, knowing those risks.
Fantastic. And one thing I wasn't able to pick up, and thank you for sending the chart that you sent with all the departments and the asks in it. How many people are being added to police and fire from current state, you know, the current numbers? Because I want to make sure that I saw it right.
Looks like police is seven FTE, and fire would be four FTE and about one and a half LTA or limited term agreement.
Okay. And what was the ask for them?
I would have to phone a friend on that one. I don't know it off the top of my head.
All right. Could you email it to me?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Torgerson's referring to the secondary property tax because the town of Gilbert doesn't have a primary property tax rate. I just want to make that clear for everybody watching. Councilmember Buckley, you have your microphone on. Would you like to ask some questions?
I just had a question on if, you know, if you were to get this small win, you know, for the residents, how does that affect the budget you've already done? Because you've looked at, is that going to affect a large number of different projects? How is that going to, so if, I don't recall, if he said it was like $200,000 or something. So that has to come off of something else you projected. Is that correct?
So the secondary property tax is a separate funding source. The revenue from property tax goes into that, and it only pays debt service. So it wouldn't impact any of the rest of the budget that's balanced. It would only impact our debt service payment.
Okay. But don't we use those funds to pay certain items?
Just like a mortgage in your house, you use your mortgage payment to pay the mortgage, not to do construction projects like replacing your roof or different things. So same thing. We already have the money that, from the bonds, and then the property tax only repays the debt service. It doesn't go directly to projects.
So that's just going to pay bonds that we have. Okay.
Yes.
Only voter-approved bonds. So the bonds that we passed in 2018 for, to build the public safety training facility, it's going to pay those bonds back. We've already used that money to build that building, and that's the only thing that those funds can be used for. But as Kelly explained a minute ago, that we have to stay within a certain range of what that fund balance looks like. Did I get the words right? Sorry.
Yes.
That that looks like between a 5% and 10%. We can't, we can't vary from that, and that's because of state law. So that's state law, right, Kelly?
State law is, we have to not be above 10% our policies, or we want to be at least 5%.
Right. Because we have to account for any time that our residents are not paying their taxes, and there's deficiencies, and we have to be able to cover that. Right?
Exactly.
Oh, good. It's taken me a long time to get all that. There's a lot to it.
Property tax usually comes in eventually, but not always the year. There's sometimes delinquencies. And sometimes the county will write them off as uncollectible or had the property on as taxable, and then a nonprofit purchased it, and it comes off the tax rolls, and then it's just never collected. So there are fluctuations that happen in collections that we need to be prepared for.
And that rate did go down. We were notified by the assessors' office that that rate did go down this year with their new software. That ours was 9.8837. I forget what it was, and it went down a little bit.
So they don't calculate the rate. They just gave us the new valuation number, which...
The evaluation.
...impacts it with the levy staying the same, the rate would go down slightly.
Yes, and our levy stays the same, meaning the amount that we need to collect to pay back that debt. Any other? Councilmember Bont Giovanni?
Hi, Kelly. If I'm not mistaken, and I could be, happens once in a while, was, is there one full-time employee on police for every 1,000 people?
I don't know the statistic off the top of my head. I would have to defer to chief if he happens to know that.
Trying to remember. Sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Bont Giovanni. I believe we're just under two. So I'll get the number and I'll send it to you, or we're under two officers per thousand.
Okay.
I think it's 1.8, if I remember correctly. If I can run that number real quick.
Because I just looked at the number here and say seven, so we're only estimating a 14,000 increase in population next year?
I'd have to look at the OMB projection, but I know we're at 285 or 282 for population? 282 on population. And then if you go to our, the website from OMB, it has a projection from MAG and from us. And so I haven't looked to see what next fiscal year projection is. But I can do that math real quick for our...
Just want to see if we're close.
We're at 323 sworn now, these two additional positions in the budget. That'd bring us to 325.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kelly. Just a couple of comments. One, I believe last year we added significant number to police and fire. For some reason, I want to say it was like 60 altogether between the two, but I'm not sure. It was a high number. So I just wanted you to be aware that this may not seem much of a bump, but they had a big one last year. And I know that they go through a rigorous process to make those decisions, so I'm not questioning that. Just wanted to share that information. The, looking to reduce the tax rate is something we always want to do. And I want to just be very cautious that, one, we have financial policies. And what are the implications if we run lower in our accounts and we don't receive the monies? What will happen then? So I just want to be careful that we're monitoring that. And the second thought is that there's nothing worse than lowering it to only turn around and raise it the next year because we didn't have the money we needed. So I just want us to be really cautious when we look at that. Obviously, we always do want to reduce taxes whenever we can, but just don't want to set us up for being in a position where we have to raise taxes in the future. And thank you for the additional documents you sent on the CIP and then the full-time employees. I really appreciate it, and for you and the team taking time to walk us through it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, those are great points that we did add a lot to public safety last year. And we ran into this with our, with our fees for our town of Gilbert bill, for lack of a better term, for the public to understand. We lowered those in 2018, and had we known what was coming, I don't know that we would have lowered them because then we had to increase and do another increase. And so that becomes an issue. And nobody remembers when you lower them, but they all remember when their bill goes up. And so that's a very difficult position to be in. I think you were close with public safety for last year. That was quite a big bump. PD might have been somewhere around 42 or something for last year. It was high. And I could be wrong, chief, so don't, he's not even looking at me. He's probably doing math back there. So any other comments or questions? And I want to mention to the council members, it does help a lot if you turn your microphones on because then I can see your light. Councilmember Kaprowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly, I have a question. CIP projects are a huge part of our budget. When are we going to be getting the CIP book with the additional detail?
Thank you. That usually comes out in August timeframe. It takes us a while to pull all of that information together. If there are specific projects you're interested in, we can get you, not in the full-format book, but the descriptions or things that we're working with right now, if that's helpful.
Okay. Yeah, I can follow up then on some of the newer projects that wouldn't be in the older book. Okay, thank you.
And the CIP team is doing a stakeholders' meeting next Thursday, April 27th, I think, at 3:00 PM here at Town Hall. So everyone's invited to participate in that. I've attended those many years, and they're very enlightening. A lot of stakeholders show up for those meetings, so I appreciate those. Any other comments or questions? I can let Kelly sit down. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up, our second issue for the evening is discussion on group homes and recovery residents. And we have, I see, Chief and Kyle Maris headed to the podium. And we have, I see Chief and Kyle Maris headed to the podium. Tag-team?
Yep.
Great.
I'll start here, then I'll move out. Okay. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here tonight. Here to give you an update on group homes and recovery residences. I'll start, and then, as I mentioned, myself and Kyle will tag-team this presentation and have an opportunity for questions at the end. So why are we here? As, as you've heard, we've heard from our residents at prior council meetings, and we've talked to them individually, not only before this meeting, but over the last six months, over their concerns about group homes and recovery residences. And that prompted this discussion last fall to come back to council and present our findings of what we can and can't do, what statutes are concerning these group homes, and recommendations of ways to improve internally, and then what we, as I mentioned, what we can and can, can and can't control, and educate you and the community about that. From here, I'll turn it over to Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our presentation tonight is really going to focus on three different areas. First, we'll just do an overview. We'll talk about the definitions of group homes and recovery residences. We'll give you some statistics from the town. We'll talk about the current regulations that we have, and then we'll give you a comparison to of how Gilbert stacks up against other communities in the valley. Then we'll move into registration and enforcement. What has Development Services done? What is Police Department, what has the Police Department done, and what has the state done when it comes to the enforcement of, of the requirements? And then we'll talk a little bit about updates and next steps that we see coming forward in, in both police and the Land Development Code updates. There's always the chance for potential legislation to go through as well, so we keep our eye on that. And then we've got a slide that talks about resident participation and, and how residents can be really involved in, in group homes and, and the discussion that occurs. So the Land Development Code currently defines group homes as five or 10 occupants and excludes staff. And really, it's a residential house that's occupied by a group of unrelated individuals. These folks are typically have physical handicaps, they're mentally impaired, or they're otherwise disabled. Group homes are licensed by the state and provide medical care and/or supervision. And in the Town of Gilbert, they must register with us before they operate. That's going to be a little bit different for recovery residences. Recovery residences do register with the town, but they also are required to obtain a business license and provide it to us in operation and management plan. So there's a little bit further of a step with the recovery residences than there are with the group homes. You can see on the slide that there are really about 27 classes and subclasses when we start to talk about group homes and recovery residences, whether it be group homes for the elderly, group homes for the disabled. There are just a lot of different classifications for facilities. And so in our Land Development Code, we've, we've broken them down just into two categories, group homes and recovery residences. And as we move forward, we'll need to take a look at our definitions to see how they compare with the state requirements and, and legislation, and maybe some of the other communities that surround us, so that our definitions are easily followed and, and we can enforce our standards as we move forward. Current statistics, currently, we have over 150 group homes in the Town of Gilbert, and we have over 25 recovery residences. We have seen an increase in facilities and requests over the last year or so. So the number of folks that are coming in and wanting to locate facilities of this type in the town has increased. And we've also seen with that a increase in concerns from residents, whether it be group homes or recovery residences as well. This is probably the largest influence when we talk about group homes and recovery residents, the Fair Housing Act. And this is really the only slide I, I completely read from. So the Fair Housing Act prohibits municipalities from making zoning or land use decisions that exclude or otherwise discriminate against individuals with disabilities. So really, what this means is we have to treat every single group home and recovery residence the same way we treat single-family homes. We can have some requirements through zoning, and those have been tested through case law over time, but for the most part, we have to treat all of these different facilities the same way we treat single-family homes and single-family neighborhoods. We can't treat them any less favorably. We can't take any adverse action toward them. And we also have to provide a reasonable accommodation step. A reasonable com, a reasonable accommodation goes through our zoning administrator in, in conjunction with the Town Attorney's Office. And really, what this is, is it's a mechanism for applicants. If they feel that the town's requirements are discriminatory or any sort of way, or are, are prohibiting them from moving forward with their application, they can file a request for accommodation that we get to then look at and make a decision on whether or not it meets the requirements of the Fair Housing Act. We take into consideration public safety and welfare concerns. We, we think about the, the character of the residential neighborhood. Really, we want to know if that, if that reasonable accommodation is, is going to meet the Fair Housing Act. Let me give you a quick example of, of a potential request for accommodation. The Town of Gilbert separation distance currently between group homes or between group homes and recovery residence, or recovery residence, recovery residence, is 1,200 feet. If somebody is at 1,150 feet, they may apply for a reasonable accommodation because they're not meeting our requirements. And this may be one that, that meets the, meets the requirements of the Fair Housing Act, and, and a reasonable accommodation could be granted. If somebody comes in and they're 500 feet from another group home or recovery residence, we may not feel that that meets the requirements of the Fair Housing Act, and it may not be a reasonable accommodation, so we may not choose to grant that reasonable accommodation. Denials of this go to our Board of Adjustment, and past that, they would go to Superior Court. So regulations currently in the Town of Gilbert. Applicants and operators are allowed to establish recovery residences or group homes in any single-family zoning district. Doesn't matter if it's a 3,000-square-foot lot or a 15,000-square-foot lot. They're allowed in all of our single-family zoning districts. Again, kind of going back to the Fair Housing Act, Fair Housing Act. We mentioned the request for reasonable accommodation. Operators always have the ability to request the reasonable accommodation. Because group homes and recovery residences are located in single-family neighborhoods, they need to continue to comply with that character of that area, meaning there's no signage on the front of the homes, parking requirements have to be adhered to. So really, a, a single-family home and a group home or recovery residence should look the same in a neighborhood. You shouldn't be able to point out the group homes or the recovery residences just by driving down the street. There has been questions in the past about some sex offenders and whether or not sex offenders can live in group homes or recovery residence. They are absolutely allowed to live in, in group homes or recovery residences as per the Fair Housing Act. Chief is going to talk here in a little bit about some of those notification requirements, but we wanted to touch on that. What operators and applicants are not allowed to do, they're not allowed to locate within 1,200 feet from another group home or recovery residence. There are some exceptions to this if the home is, if the homes are separated by railroad right-of-way, arterial road right-of-way, canals, things of that which provide a larger separation to begin with. HOAs are not allowed to prohibit group homes or recovery residences. And currently, in our Land Development Code, group homes cannot exceed five residents or, unless the state's license that's granted to them allows them up to 10. So if they have a license for seven occupants, we would allow seven occupants. If they're capped at five, we would, we would keep it at five. One of the things in our Land Development Code too is it says that operators are not allowed to house any resident that constitutes a direct threat to other individuals or a substantial threat to property of others. This one has come up in conversations before. This one is very difficult for staff to enforce. It is really in our Land Development Code requirements to put the onus back on the operators so that they know this is the, the level of standard that the town is holding them to. This may be something that we will look at too as we, we bring forward some potential changes to the Land Development Code in the future. So based on the Fair Housing Act and the Land Development Code and state statutes, what can the town do? What are municipalities allowed to do? As I mentioned, we're allowed to enforce our, our residential zoning requirements, signage, parking, building additions, things of that nature. We do have the ability to approve and, and deny the, the accommodation requests that I mentioned. And then we can require group homes and recovery residences to register with the town, comply with our building and fire safety regulations, comply with state licensing, and then, as I mentioned, comply with Gilbert parking requirements as well. What are municipalities not allowed to do? We can't grant or revoke state licenses. The state is the entity that, that grants or revokes the state licenses. We can make recommendations to the state. We can provide the state information, but we really have no authority to grant or revoke those licenses. We can't exceed the authority granted by state law. So if state law caps an occupancy, it, it says you can have six or more, and the town says we want to have two or three, we, we are not allowed to do that. We can't exceed the authority granted to us by state law. And then, as we mentioned with the Fair Housing Act, we can't discriminate in housing on the basis of disability in any way, shape, or form at all. Here's the comparison I mentioned. You can see Gilbert's distance requirement is 1,200 feet between facilities. You can see the occupancy there, no more than five, a reasonable accommodation. Really, what we wanted to show you with this slide and the following slide is that Gilbert's requirements are really in, in line and consistent with other communities and municipalities in the valley. Phoenix has a little bit higher distance separation, but for the most part, we're, we're right in line. Here's Peoria, Tempe, Glendale, and Scottsdale. Again, you can see Peoria and Glendale have a little bit larger separation distance, but for the most part, we're, we're very consistent and in line with how other municipalities are handling group homes and recovery residents. So registration and enforcement. Development Services, as I've mentioned, any group home applicant or recovery residence applicant comes to the town through Development Services to register. Once that registration is occurring, we pull up the map, we identify the location of the proposed home, and we see if it falls within 1,200 feet of any other facility. That's where it starts. Code compliance is available. There are a team that does enforce all of the residential zoning requirements. So weed, signage, illegal construction, parking problems, those sorts of things. Anything really developing with the, the Land Development Code, our code and compliance team would deal with as far as group homes and recovery residences. And then inspections. If there are inspections that need to be done by our Building Department, we, we will go out to the site and do the inspections. And if there's any problems that are seen, we obviously have the responsibility to, to let the state know if we find anything that is against the, the registration or against the state licensing. As we've mentioned, we've talked a, a lot about the sex offenders and whether or not they are allowed or not allowed in group homes. And, and as I mentioned, they are. There is a notification requirement that is, that is set up for that. The Chief can now kind of talk about that, that question and how that process will work.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As Kyle mentioned, the sex offender laws are applicable to every location in, in the state, not just group homes. But specifically, we wanted to point out that it's the sex offenders, it's their requirement to register with the sex offender, registering and notify the sheriff anytime they change their residence. They do have to tell the group home that they are a sex offender, but then community notification is not either of their responsibilities. That's the local jurisdiction, in this case, obviously us. And anytime those, the residents change, that has to be notified to the sheriff within 72 hours. There are several statutes in Title 13, Chapter 38, that deal with sex offender registry, pointing out three here. 3821 defines who has to register. 3822 explains the process of how they register as a sex offender. And then 3825 explains the process for community notification. The next slide, I'll walk you through an example of a situation in which someone, a sex offender, would be released from DOC. Now, keep in mind, they're not always released from DOC. Someone may be found guilty, and they're sent to probation or whatnot. So wherever, whether it's released from the court or released from DOC, that agency has the, the duty to notify DPS, the Department of Public Safety, where that person, that offender, is going to be located at. At that same time, within 72 hours, the offender has to register in the sex registry notification into the registry as to where they're going to be residing. DPS then sends, in this example, DPS sends that information over, sorry, DOC sends to DPS. DPS then has 10 days to verify that the offender did register in the sex offender registry, and that that information matches the information that was provided by DOC to DPS. If there is not a match, then they will initiate an investigation with DOC in this example for a violation of the registration requirements. But assuming everything matches, then they would then take that information, pass it on to the sheriff. If it's a county island, the sheriff would maintain responsibility for community notification. If it's a local agency such as us, it would come to us, and it's our responsibility to review the packet and categorize the individual. So we get that. Level zero is a sex offender that was convicted of a sex offense prior to 1996. A level one is, in that situation, we only have to, not we, well, us and the offender have to notify all residents within that residence, but not the community. A level two or a level three is your more serious and or concerning behavior from those sex offenders, and those require the community notification. For a level two or a level three, state law requires that no more than 45 days that that community notification has to be sent out, and that can be sent out to the, the neighborhood approximately about a half-mile distance from the location of the residence. And that would also include schools, community groups, and prospective employers. As mentioned, state law requires 45-day notification. That is the maximum. So we looked at our sex offenders that we have registered with us, and our approximate average response to community notification is 30 days. So a good two weeks shorter than the state mandatory or the maximum allowed by the state. Some of the things that may affect that in some of the examples that we had discussed last fall with one of the group homes in which a sex offender was placed there, but the notification never went out. They have, as I mentioned, they have to notify the sheriff of any change within 72 hours, and that starts our process for doing the community notification. But it, so if that person moves again, they still have 72 hours from the new location to notify the sheriff of the new location. That resets the clock, resets that timeline for us to do community notification. So there are times where someone would be placed temporarily. We're aware of it, the sheriff is aware of it. That information's being sent over to us, but by the time we get the packet, they have been moved, which is legal as long as they are properly notifying that new location. There are, in the statutes, I don't go into detail on this, on the slides, but someone can be registered as a transient sex offender, and in that case, every 90 days, they have to confirm with the sheriff where their general location is, and that information is shared with that jurisdiction. There are also an opportunity, if there are multiple houses, or if they were at a group home or a friend's house, and they went from four different locations, it aggregates over a 30-day period. If, if any time they're at that location more than three days, in that 30 days, they have to register that as well. That changes the timeline for us to verify every, six months, we have to verify that that information is correct. Once a person's placed, the notifications are sent out yearly. We have to verify all that information is still accurate. And obviously, if anybody moves, that whole process starts over for that notification process. We met with the Arizona Department of Health Services. They've been very cooperative with us, and they met with us in Development Services, and walking through their processes and helping us refine the way we can send referrals to them and what to look for. And a lot of this is on their website, but we consolidated from the website and from our meetings with them. So I'm going to walk you through what type of referrals they receive, what they do when they receive them, and what their enforcement opportunities are. So any criminal activity, us as a law enforcement agency or the public can submit that to Arizona Department of Health Services, an online referral. Anytime there's negative outcomes related to residential, the resident's health or safety, repeat or uncorrected deficiencies, that's more in the side of DHS. If they see continued violations, that could create a new referral for them. If there's personnel issues, if the residents are left alone, they have to have someone there at all times from the, the owners of the group home. And then if they're over capacity, Kyle mentioned the five, the six, the 10 max, those numbers, if they're over that, and that doesn't include staff, that's just residents, that could be a, a cause for a referral. And then any faults or misleading information that's provided to, to the state, that could cause them to initiate a referral. So some of the considerations they take into consideration when they receive it is, is there a risk of life, life or health or safety to any of the residents? Is this a repeat violation? What's the severity of the violation? How, what's the pattern of a violation? Is it weekly, monthly? Is it just once a year? So they, they take that into consideration in determining how to, what steps to take forward. When a referral is sent in, there, when we submit it, we get an acknowledgement that the referral has been received by Arizona Department of Health Services, but we don't always get information back as to- information back as to what they do with it. But from what they told us and from what the website shows, they would document it at a minimum. They can also do inspections, but some of the enforcement side is doing civil penalties and fines. They could revoke the license, they could do a cease and desist letter or an injunction. They're, just with our processes, there are processes for appeals on behalf of the owners, the licensees as well, and that's handled all by the state. We don't, we can provide information if we're the source, but that's a process that they handle. So updates on next steps. As we mentioned, we started looking at this a couple of years ago, but then more specifically again last fall and trying to refine. Our initial response from the PD was to look at the calls for service. We're looking at it monthly, but we were really lacking that urgency, and we were missing minor details we come to find. So we refined our process to where we are looking at all licensed group homes, recovery homes from our database. We've integrated that into our computer-aided dispatch, our CAD system. And so we have all those flags. So we can run reports. We're not treating them any differently. We're just running a weekly report so that we get a report of any calls for service, and a lot of the calls end up being like 911 hang-up calls. But we get those weekly reports, then our detectives review those cases each week, and anything that's criminal nature or concerning, based on that criteria that I just discussed, they will submit an online referral. So we've been doing that since the first week of February of this year. So far this year, since February, we've submitted seven referrals to DHS for either crimes or concerns that we've seen. And it doesn't limit, it's just PD, as I mentioned, and I'll talk in a minute about what the community can do. The community can, if they have a concern or what they believe is a violation, they can do a referral as well. If we do it, they do it, they would just merge those in together unless they are separate issues. So we, as I mentioned, we're doing that weekly, making sure we're capturing it. Another thing that we're going to work on is, what we're seeing is a lot of 911 hang-up calls, which is not a big deal, but if it's happening every week, we want to try to capture the bigger picture. If that's something that's happening every week, we're getting two or three calls over 52 weeks, obviously, that's 150-plus calls that we're responding to or potentially fire if it's a potential medical issue. And so we want to take our current report and revise it again to where we're looking at it more of a monthly and a quarterly picture to see those non-emergency, non-criminal calls. Is there an issue that we could work with them, either through crime prevention or us or through DHS, to see what else we can improve so that we don't have to respond, save us time, make sure that they're operating appropriately? Turn it over to Kyle, then back to me.
Thank you. The last time our land development code was updated, as it refers to group homes and recovery residences, was in 2017. It's a really good time now for us to take another look as, well, as you well know, there's a lot of legislation that occurs and changes definitions and changes requirements. So this gives us a great opportunity to begin to look at that. And we've had our attorneys and council start to look at that and compare that with some state statutes. So we will be bringing back changes to the land development code as needed in order to update what's in the code at this point. Obviously, all those will be public hearing items. They'll go in front of the Planning Commission and ultimately come to Town Council for approval.
So I mentioned, we've spoken to our community members, and we've listened at the information that was provided and their concerns. So we wanted to make sure we addressed and give some advice to the community as to what they can, what their role is and how they can help us and address some of their concerns. So obviously, if there's an emergency, call 911. If it's not an emergency, but it's a crime-related issue or a potential violation of the licensing, they can call us, or non-emergency number 503-6500. We also have the 311 app. So if there's like parking violation or something like that, it doesn't need immediate response, but they want it documented, and it's something we can follow up on, they can use the app as well. Additionally, I mentioned Department of Health Services, the ADHS, that they can report, either call, the number's up here on the screen, 602-364-2639, or the website. And we are also, Development Services, I keep calling the wrong name, they called me on that today. Development Services has a webpage currently with a lot of the questions about licensing and what, regarding group homes. We will replicate that on our side, on the PD's side, and then we'll add this, the address for DHS. So if someone wants more information, there's a lot of really good and useful information in there. Or if you want to see, look up a group home, you can do that by either the address or the business name. So we'll give that information to our website, but anyone can do a referral. It asks for as much information as possible. Obviously, the more information, the better they can do with the referral that you're submitting. And obviously, contact HOA. The majority of our neighborhoods have HOAs. We don't enforce CCNRs. Code enforcement doesn't enforce CCNRs. But group homes have to follow the same protocols that any other house does within the HOA community. So if they're in violation of the CCNRs, that's an issue that should be addressed through the HOA. If it is criminal or a civil issue as well, us, where code enforcement could be contacted as well. So sometimes it'll hit multiple categories. And then code compliance. As we mentioned before, within the restrictions that they have, the residents' numbers and the locations, you can also contact code enforcement with concerns. And that concludes our presentation. If there's any questions, we're open to hear. Kyle had mentioned with the LDC, we're not giving you what those recommendations are, and we've hired an attorney to help us review those codes. And so we'll get a legal opinion as to some additional recommendations to bring forward to you. But tonight, we just want to give you an overview of and educate the community as well as you of what we can do, what we can't do, and what we've done to try to improve on our side. Any questions?
Thanks, Chief. Councilmember Anderson.
Just a quick question, Kyle. When you update the LDC, are you going to involve stakeholders, some of those who have come down, spoken to us about the issues in their neighborhood? Are you going to involve them in reviewing what we are going to change?
Mayor Council. Mayor Council, yes, absolutely, we'll have to do that. That would be, that would be important to have those conversations, especially because then as we bring things forward, it'll be important for everybody to understand what we can do and what we can't do. So having those conversations early will be important.
That was the biggest thing for me, is being able to tell them what we can do and can't do, that they can understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hany. Oh, Councilmember Banjubani, please.
Kyle, being in the industry for 30 years and seeing the categories that we currently have, even I got confused with staff trying to discuss the difference between residential, senior care, assisted living homes, and et cetera. Out of the 27 categories, my guess is there's probably nine that are actual residential seeking and not in commercial spaces. So would you be okay with aligning some of those categories with the state category so they're easier to understand in our regulations?
Mayor Council, yeah, I think that'll be very important as we move forward with our changes to the land development code.
Councilmember Kaprowski.
Thank you. To kind of tag on to those two comments, as the liaison to Gilbert Public Schools, I attended a meeting this month with Gilbert Public Schools and learned that they have a very exceptional special education department and that people and families actually move to Gilbert to attend their programs. And so I think that's something that we would need to recognize or maybe have them as a stakeholder and those families participate, because as those students age, then they're probably the ones that are now adults with disabilities that are in some of those group homes. And I'd like to make sure that we separate the, you know, group homes from the homes for rehabilitation and ensure that we are able to accommodate those individuals living in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments, questions on this topic? Chief, you mentioned that the community is notified. How does that happen?
On sex offender notification? A couple of different ways. So normally, we would send a flyer within that, if it's within that half-mile, but we also, there's a electronic registry, I forget the website, but we entered that information as well. And then in the state law, that does allow us both electronic and paper. And so if you're within that half-mile, you're going to get a notification. But there are a lot of services, you, anyone can get in the registry and look in their neighborhood and see who is, if it's a level two or a level three, you can see their picture, you can see what they're convicted of and what, any restrictions they have. But that's open to everybody. You would only get a direct communication if you fall within that circle, that sphere of the circumference of the residence. And so if someone's looking to buy or looking for different locations, or whether it be a business, if you want that information, it's all available. But we enter all of ours in there, so all of our Gilbert residents are in there. And then if somebody transfers from Gilbert to Chandler or Mesa, there is a process where we give that file to the next jurisdiction. They review everything we did, and they start that same process. And so that, once that change is made, the electronic database should be changed as well. But there are a lot of different credit notifications, a lot of different identity alerts, that you will get an alert, I get them, where, hey, there's a sex offender in your area. A lot of times, it may be 10 miles away, but it's pulling a larger sphere of what, it's not a mandatory requirement, it's more of a convenience and a courtesy. But that information is available to everyone. And you can look in other states as well, if you want to see what's around your parents or grandparents or whatnot.
Do we provide that contact, that website on our website, on the police department's website?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it explains the process, the law, and also it should have the registry or the link to the registry. And if not, I'll make sure it's there, but it should be, it was there before.
And I don't want anyone to think that we're saying that every person that enters one of these sober living homes or group homes is a sex offender. We're just pointing out that some are, and we've had those complaints, and these are ways that you can track those or be notified of those.
Yes, yeah. And just keep in mind that, as we mentioned, a lot of the group homes in rehabilitation, they're temporary. And so a lot of times, you won't have a permanent resident there, so it's going to be hit and miss as to whether, if it, if we show they're there, they're still there, but there could be that lag of within 30 days, technically 45, they might have moved.
Yeah, and that could happen quite often. I wanted to thank you for stepping up last year when we had the issue with the group home and working, we all worked with AZDHS, or I guess it's just ADHS. And you came up with some ideas of things that you could help with, that you could be their eyes on the ground when you enter these homes. And they were great to work with under those circumstances, and I'm glad to see that we're stepping forward to do that. And we did learn during that process that while a home could potentially be being questioned by ADHS, that they have a right to continue to do business. While they run an appeal process, they have a right to continue to do business, and so they could stay open doing exactly the same thing that they're doing while they're going through this bureaucratic process, if you will.
Right.
Right. Any other comments vice mayor?
Thank you, Mary. Mary. Oh, goodness. Oh, mayor, thank you very much. I was going to apologize for not speaking up before you had your comments. I want to talk just a moment about 311 and how perhaps you all can look at this a little deeper and maybe identify some best practices for neighbors, because when I think about it, it's one of the easiest ways to actually record something, and that way, we have it on record, and we can use that as part of a case if we needed to in lieu of calling 911 and waiting for an officer to get there, and maybe whatever was happening is over at that point. So I just wanted to make a comment that if we can look at expanding that use in these cases, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, and mayor, Vice Mayor Tilke, 311 is a good opportunity. Easy, convenient for residents to relay concerns and or violations. But we would ask if it's something of health or safety risk, that they do call the 911 or the non-emergency number. The intent, most of our calls, so to speak, are app submissions, are parking, graffiti, some code enforcement issues. Sometimes they'll come to us, sometimes they'll come to code, it depends on how the person entered it. And those are ones, parking specifically, and that was a question that was raised earlier today, was parking of, you know, if there's 10 cars in front of the group home, should they call us? They should only call us if it's a violation. So if they're illegally parked, too far away from the curb, they're blocking the roadway, or parked where they're blocking a driveway, a sidewalk, a fire hydrant, if it's against the law, then they should contact us. And if it's a safety issue, then yes, call rather than doing the 311 app. But if they're legally parked and the CCNRs don't restrict it, our code or signs don't restrict it, there's no reason to call us because they're legally parked, and we will look at it and say, there's nothing we can do because it's legally parked. So there's some common courtesy that hopefully would take place. If you have frequent guests, whether it's a group home or not, that you would park on your side of the street. But we do have some locations where they can't because it's restricted, because it's too narrow for a fire truck, so there's only parking on one side. And so we deal with that as well. But the 311 is a good opportunity to report something that needs to be fixed, but not an immediate response.
I have a neighbor that they have six or seven vehicles just for everybody in their home, and it's not a group home or a sober living home, and they're parked all over our neighborhood, facing every which way. And so we would have to make sure that all the homes are treated equally in that case. So if there were tickets being written for those cars at that home, then we'd have to make sure that everybody's treated equally too.
Yep.
And that comes under the FHA. I had a conversation with Lieutenant Governor Anton this morning from the Gila River Tribal Nation, and she's working with the governor, and she specifically said group homes and sober living homes because they have indigenous people disappearing, and they are connecting them somehow to these group homes and sober homes, excuse me. And the governor actually did an executive order on this topic, and she put a group together. So if we could keep an eye on that too, because I think it might, I don't know if any state regulations might come from that. I don't know, it would have to probably be the next legislative session at this point, but let's keep an eye on that too. And I asked Governor Anton if she would send me the information that she's been supplying to the governor, because I think that, I think that it could be helpful. We share borders with our tribal nations, and I think it could be helpful to us too to have that.
Mayor Council, thank you. Yeah, and that's the information we passed on to our community members as well of if they have ideas, because they do have some ideas. When it comes to licensing, we can control what Kyle had mentioned, but when it comes to license categories that are dictated by the state, the license approvals or revocations, that's at the state. But we can certainly try to pass that information on to the state or the community and try to make some improvements.
And that's all we can do, and we've been working on this. I've been talking about group homes for 10 or 12 years here in Gilbert, between Planning Commission, Council, and now as mayor. It's a difficult situation. We want to make sure that everybody has a place to go in our community. We just want to make sure that these businesses are run correctly. We know that there, we always know that there are bad apples out there. I think I said that to the press last year. We know that there are good pizza places and bad pizza places. We know there are good plumbers and bad plumbers. You know, it's the same, no matter what kind of business it is, fill in the blank. So thank you for following up on this and doing the work that you're doing. And I agree that we need to definitely bring the public in for stakeholders group too. Thanks. Any other comments? Everybody looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, chief. Okay, those are our only two items for our study session this evening. We can go ahead and adjourn the study session and give you a little bit of time before our next meeting.